Good evening and welcome to the March 2nd, 2021, meeting of the Oxford Board of Selectmen. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, which is General Law, Chapter 38, Section 18. And the Governor's March 15th, 2020, order concerning imposition on strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in the town of Oxford are being conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. No in-person attendance or members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in this order. And I would like to start with attendance, so I will start with Selectman Triano.
President.
Thank you. Selectman LeBlanc.
Here.
Thank you. Selectman Daniels.
Present.
Thank you. Selectman Sad is absent, and I am Selectman Lamash. I am also here. Now, before we begin this meeting, I'd like to make a brief statement about our last meeting. At the last meeting of the Board of Selectmen, I feel that I acted in a less than professional manner and that some of the communication between board members was not handled appropriately. It is important that we set an example for the residents of Oxford, a good example of how to behave during meetings, even if disagreements arise. Therefore, I pledge to behave in a manner more befitting this board and this town, and I look forward to working cooperatively with all of you at this and future meetings in the best interests of the town of Oxford. Thank you. And the first item on our agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes for January 5th. I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
I'd make that motion. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any comments? Call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Abstain.
And I'll vote yes. That's three yeses, one abstention, and one absent. Those minutes are approved. Next item is a short-term borrowing renewal, which is presented by Jillian Connor, who is our treasurer-collector. Jillian, I guess I open it up to you, huh?
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. How are you this evening?
Very good.
I'm here before you to have you sign an approval of a short-term bond renewal. The original bond amount was for $1,562,600. We paid down $209,600 this year, and we also are adding to the borrowing with the remaining amount on the Sacagawea Bridge repair of $684,000 that was unborrowed at this time, but we are borrowing the full amount that was approved. The loan this time will be $237,000. This is, we are rolling, I'm not sure if you all remember, but we are rolling all of our bonds. We had some in August that renewed, and then some that renewed in March. This borrowing, we are rolling all of them, all of our short-term into one. So this is renewing the ones we just renewed in August. We're not paying anything down because we already did this fiscal year, but just kind of to clean it all up and get it all into one short-term bond renewal for every year. So with this borrowing, we're borrowing for the splash pad, the library repair, the clock tower, the carbuncle back house, OHS bleachers, the roof, Sacagawea Bridge, and the LED streetlights. TD Bank was awarded again, the bidder, with 0.33% interest. Last year, the interest on this was 1.37%, and in August, it was 0.77%. So it is going down, which is good to see. This is for a 10-year note that would renew every year unless we decide to roll it into a long-term borrowing. So I'm just here before you to ask if you'd like to reaffirm your original vote to approve the borrowing. And there are five documents that I believe Dee will have because we do need wet ink signatures.
All right. Thank you very much, Jillian. Board members, any comments or questions?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Sure.
Jillian, if you don't mind, you said it was the splash pad, the library repair, OHS, the roof. Was it the roof of OHS?
Yes, OHS roof, sorry, and the bleachers.
And the bleachers? And then the Sacagawea Bridge, and then the LED lights?
Yes, and I believe the clock tower, the second half of a clock tower, I didn't hear you say, is that as well?
Okay, thank you. A quick question. The borrowing for the splash pad, is that paid out of the Cecilia Smolinski Fund?
It is, yes. We do borrow for it, but it is paid for out of the Smolinski-Mallett Fund.
Okay, so the only portions that we're paying are, we're paying the borrowing costs for everything else is what the town is paying?
Correct.
Okay, and then, and I apologize, what did you say the interest rate was for this?
The interest rate, the highest bidder, was TD Bank at 0.33% interest.
Did you say 0.33%? Okay. And that's for one year, you said?
One year, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to clarify those items.
Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? And not hearing any, I would entertain a motion to approve the short-term borrowing bond.
I would make a motion that the board approve the short-term borrowing bond renewal.
I second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve. I will call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. That's for an affirmative, one absent. We have approved that, and we will sign those documents, Jillian. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too. Okay, next item on our agenda is the BVO LLC presentation, which is being presented by Kenneth Lucas. You there, Ken?
Yeah, I just had to unmute my audio. Hi, everybody. I'm not sure if everybody remembers me or not. So I've presented before, I'm pretty much present, I'm gonna present. A lot of the information is the same, but since we met last, things have changed. We've hired some people to move forward with the project, and we definitely have a pretty good plan going forward. So some of this will be repetitive, but we do have a lot more specific information. You know, like plant count has changed, the layout has changed. So like, our goals are still the same. So with that, we can start the presentation. Do you have the PowerPoint?
Tim, do you have that?
Okay, perfect. I'm gonna go over the presentation again, and then when I'm finished, I'm gonna have David Oles from American Alarm. He'll go over some security information and answer any questions. And we also have James Wormser here, who is head of cultivation for the company. So the name is Bay State's very own. We're located at Fort Pioneer Drive, Oxford, Massachusetts. Our goals, our goals are pretty simple. First, we need to obtain approval from local government. Second, develop a successful commercial cultivation facility for cannabis. And really important, to be fully compliant with all state and local requirements. On our mission, our mission is to be an industry leader by cultivating and producing clean, high-quality cannabis with the most efficient cost-effective methods and strategies. It's important overall, it's important part of our overall mission is to be a good corporate citizen to the communities which we operate, as well as the markets we serve. It's part of the vision for this facility as well, you know, we want, we don't wanna, we're not a huge facility. It's pretty small when you compare it to other buildings. So one of our really main goals is we wanna, wanna supply the Massachusetts market with a really high-quality product. And I think, I know we'll definitely achieve that, especially with James as head of cultivation. He has quite a bit of experience in Massachusetts market and a rather impressive resume, if you were to ask me. But, okay, so products and services is the next slide. So these are the numbers that have changed. These are pretty specific numbers. The interior of the building has been designed. We more or less have locked down a floor plan, a security plan. Obviously, there's gonna be some small changes. And we could go over the interior of the building someday in maybe a closed-door meeting. But for certain reasons, mainly layout, it just, it'd been advised to me that it shouldn't be public information. But moving on, so we'll veg. So the veg plants, those are the small plants you propagate and move into flower. So we'll have about 2,720 small plants that we're preparing to flower at any given time, and 4,320 plants once we're fully operational. We're gonna grow about 15 to 30 different strains. James is, he's a, phenohunting is when you, when you buy seeds and search for a winner, basically a genetic that is superior to others, and he has quite a bit of experience in that as well. So that goes hand in hand with us trying to create a craft cannabis facility. We'll need, we have a research and development room where we will do breeding with male and female genetics and create new crosses and phenohunt our own genetics. So that would be cool. The next slide is our objectives. So we're gonna do like a two-tier growing system, so it's like, it's just like any racks you'd see at Costco. They're about seven feet tall each. They're able to grow in these double tiers now because of LED technology. This facility is gonna be basically state-of-the-art LED technology, all redundancy with HVAC. It will have air sanitation devices that take hydrogen and oxygen out of the air and create hydrogen peroxide mists to sterilize the room and kill mold and mildew. It's pretty advanced. So we'd like to secure the license obviously first. And to start, we're gonna build out two of four flowering rooms. There's four total flowering rooms. Last time we met, there were really only three. We thought we could only fit about three, but we've found the space. So year two, we'd like to start building out the additional rooms, which would bring our canopy above 5,000 marks, so 7,680 square-foot canopy, which would fall under the two-tier, the second tier. Year three, build-out is complete and the facility is operating at maximum capacity. Year four, BVO LLC is now trusted, consistent brand. You know, I talked about at the last meeting, we're not trying to just grow cannabis. We're trying to create a brand that's recognized nationwide. So, you know, we don't wanna just sell cannabis. We wanna sell merchandise, which, I mean, merchandise is a huge market. Everybody on Instagram, YouTubers, they all, that's like a goal, is to sell merchandise because it's such easy money. And then year five, I would like to continue to build out facilities and grow the business. I enjoy doing this. I'd definitely like to get one under my belt, but once I get one, I'm sure I would like to continue challenging myself. Okay, the next slide is our financial summary. These numbers have changed quite a bit as well. So we have four flowering rooms, and we're gonna target about five harvests each per year. That's the rule of thumb. You can get about five, five harvests from a room per year. So first year, we'll, we have a goal of about 10 harvests, and once we're fully operational, we'll have 20, 20 harvests per year. The initial build-out of the facility will have capability of producing approximately 360 to 432 pounds of flour per room, per harvest, which would be about every two weeks. By the start of year three, we'll have three flower rooms with 144 lights per room, and one flower room with 24 lights. Actually, that's a typo. It's 48 lights. So that, the smaller room is the research and development room. That's one of the reasons why it's smaller. Usually, you don't dedicate too much space to experimenting, but it's just what we had. So we're, we have a goal of production between 2 and 1/2 to 3 pounds of dried soluble cannabis per light in the facility at 20 harvests a year. You know, we should be looking at 5,700 to 6,840 pounds of cannabis produced at the facility. So right now, cannabis for a pound, it's being sold for $4,000. That's a ton of money. It's usually not that high. You know, my, when I did the projections last time, I did them both, but when I presented, I did it at 4,000. This time, I did it at 3,000 because I think once we really get there, I think the market will have come down a little bit, so I just wanted to try to be as accurate possible with the numbers. So I think we should definitely exceed $17 million a year once we're fully operational. That shouldn't be a problem. This is just a financial summary. It's pretty straightforward. It's obviously estimates, but, you know, I've put a bunch, I've put quite a bit of time into figuring out how much it's gonna cost, what our payroll is gonna be. So these numbers should be pretty accurate, especially if the price is around 3,000. Hopefully, it's, could be 35. You just never know with these things. It could even stay at 4,000 for years. You don't know. We're growing craft cannabis, so it'll always be a little bit more expensive than your typical cultivator. The next, this has changed as well. We've added quite a bit of trimmers just through going through our layout and what our facility needs and how it's gonna operate. James, the head of cultivation, he has six years' experience in Massachusetts market. He's worked closely with people at the CCC. He's run facilities three times as big as this. And yeah, so we've added a grower, quite a bit of trimmers, I think, two or three more trimmers. And this kind of shows how we're gonna expand. You know, the salaries, they kind of increased quite a bit, but the facility's only gonna be operating at half-capacity at first. Their workload will increase, so I'm just a firm believer in paying your employees an honest wage. So if their workload increases by two, they shouldn't get like a $1.25 raise, which is, you know, when you work out in the, in the world, they think they give you, doing you a favor by giving you 75 cents extra an hour a year, you know? It's just not enough. So yeah, this is, this should be pretty accurate. I mean, we've run the numbers, and that should be our staff. So the diversity plan, this is really stuff that's important for the CCC and us. You know, we're going to hire minorities, women, veterans, people with disabilities. This is something that I want to do, so, you know, hopefully, we can fill it with, with honest, good people who deserve chances. That's just how we feel. So we'll, this diversity plan has basically been approved, so by the CCC. It's something we put together. But yeah, we'll have opportunity for advancement. We would love to, you know, always, always, when I, when I talk to people who own businesses and they, or I talk to employees at business, and they've always been like, oh, well, he's been here 20 years. He's been here 15 years. Like, that's kind of what I wanna emulate. I wanna be a business owner who's had employees for 30 years, for 15 years, and like, you know, just be more like a family. So our plan for, our plan for positive impact is our next slide. This is just for, to encourage, I mean, I used to do Habitat. I took, I went to New Orleans in college and built houses. I do believe in civil service and community service. So we're going to encourage our employees to volunteer, and we're even gonna give them some time out of their, out of their paid time per month, which, that's the next slide, which is community engagement, just to try to get our employees to give back to, you know, I mean, it, we don't just keep it to Oxford. It says that, but we want, we want to, you know, surrounding towns matter as well. Scholarship, similar, we're gonna use some of the funds. And this is negotiable, you know, we could always discuss this, but we'd like to start a scholarship. There's actually, Niagara University has quite an impressive cannabis program. They, they have beautiful grow facilities where they cultivate cannabis and have a dedicated, I think it's the only real college that has an accredited cannabis cultivation program. The next slide is the community impact fee. This is pretty straightforward, 3%. The company agrees to pay 3% of its gross revenues to the town, renew the contract every five years. We're willing to give a donation, initial payment upon award of the provisional license, which I'm not sure what that amount is. I guess that would be negotiated later. The next slide, green waste. This is pretty straightforward. When we, when you pull down a cannabis grow, there's obviously gonna be stems and leaves and everything else. And if anybody has any questions about this, they can ask James because he's actually done the process. But you just mix all the product together, you grind it up, and a company comes and takes it. That's a CCC regulation, so that must occur. All right, so this is new information. Well, it's all kind of new information, but this is accurate. I had sent some preliminary, preliminary numbers, but they weren't that accurate after really going through the facility. So at a given time, we'll have 4,320 plants and flower being fed 28 to 32 ounces of water per day. Our veg plants, let me just move this, will accommodate 2,592 plants that will be used for flowering, and 128 will be larger mother plants that will take clippings off of for cloning purposes. Those plants will receive 10 to 15 ounces, and the smaller ones will probably receive even less than 10. Clone, the clones, it's very minimal. We're not going to use cloners. We're gonna use probably little, little plugs, and they take, you know, 10 milliliters of water. It's not very much. So our total water usage in flowers between 945 and 1,080 gallons. Total water usage in veg is 222 to 329. The next, this is like site plan information. This will be important for that meeting if we get there, hopefully. So we're gonna be using a lot of water. What we've been advised by consultants and people who've built facilities this size and larger, we should see about 5% runoff. So we'll have 58 to 71 gallons running off, and that will be something the town will have to determine if you will allow me to let it go into the sewer, or I need to remove it a different way. There are methods of, you know, solidifying the waste and getting rid of it and not just dumping it in the sewer. But that will be totally on the town and whatever they wish. So that's the end of the presentation. There is another, another slide I wanted to bring up. It's basically the site plan and the exterior of, the exterior security plan for the facility. So this is what will be presented at site plan if we sign an HCA. Well, the cameras, I don't, I don't know if they'll be included, but Career and Handlin is that civil engineer firm that I've hired to do these drawings, the site plan. We've needed to add some spaces, obviously, because we do expect to have about 14 employees, and we're right on, right on the line. But it will work. We could maybe find one more spot on the south side of the screen. I don't know if it's actually the true south, but in between those four spaces along the back road, there's a garage there that's going to be sealed, so we might be able to find another parking spot there. But yeah, we're gonna put the HVAC on the roof. It's quite a bit of equipment. I've priced out almost all aspects of this job. I know how it's gonna be laid out, how it's gonna be constructed, the lighting, the racks, the HVAC, the security cost is not, we haven't got there yet, but I have a good idea. So it's, it's all pretty much been planned out, and this is how we're going to try to do it. So David is going to kind of go over the exterior security plan. He's from American Alarm, and I believe he's, I think he's presented in front of this board twice before, or maybe at least once. So David.
Good evening, everyone. David Oles, American Alarm and Communications. Currently in town, I believe this could be our third potential facility for American Alarm and Communications. We have extensive background in the cannabis industry. We've been in it approximately five years and have stood up 70 facilities in Massachusetts between cultivation, retail, and processing. So on the exterior plan, obviously, we're showing the perimeter cameras to give us a good perimeter overview of the facility, both the perimeter of the building and the parking areas. We'll also be taking note the generator's waste disposal areas. And then inside the facility, not shown, we will meet all the requirements of the Cannabis Control Commission for our security alarms, panics, camera coverage, and all the security-related needs for the building. So that's the basis of what we design towards. We'll meet with the police chief as needed, town officials, but the guidelines we fall under are following the regulations for the Cannabis Control Commission. And as we all know, they're pretty extensive, and they're pretty well-thought-out, and they look for full camera coverage and leave the facilities in a pretty good spot for coverage and security.
I apologize. I should have asked, but does, well, does anybody have any questions for, for Mr. Oles? David, the security advisor?
Board members, any questions for Ken or David in regards to this presentation?
Mr. Chairman, I know you were asking the board, but I just wanted the board to also know that American Alarm has been in touch with our police chief. Ken Lucas and I had talked about the remaining areas that Uh, Ken Lucas and I had talked about the uh remaining areas that we needed to um be providing information to the board and to my office, as well as some of the other departments. And um, and he's been coming. And um, we just recently received the last documents, but I do know American Alarm has been in touch with the Chief SAD. Chief SAD did say to me that we're very satisfied with um the presentation uh for the facility. And obviously, in confidential manner, provide um excellent security to the building. And uh, the chief did say that uh when we do the host agreement, that we just have the condition that the, the police department will be able to inspect the premises uh once it's uh ready to go operational.
We encourage that. I mean, most of the facilities will be visited by police and fire department alike, and they should be accustomed to the buildings and familiar with the layouts and floor plans for both security and fire related needs.
So I've, I've spoke to uh Chief SAD uh multiple times. I've met with him. Uh, I, I, I spoke to him today and sent him uh the interior and exterior plans of the building. And he said he would keep them confidential in a police file for our company. And and he's, he looked them over and and he was satisfied. So if anybody has any questions for me, they can ask at any time. But uh I wanted to give a chance for James to address the board um and and give you guys an opportunity to ask him questions because uh he's the expert on these facilities because he's done it. And he's worked successfully, extremely successfully for six years in in the industry in Massachusetts. So, um, James?
All right. Thank you, Ken. Board members, any questions or comments?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question for David, please.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Olds, I just wanted you pick, I wanted to pick up on something. Uh, you had mentioned that um the, the cameras and whatnot, you mentioned that they were regulated uh per the Cannabis Commission. And again, I'm not, I'm not certain if that's what I heard. But I, so for all of these facilities that have, they are required to have interior cameras and security systems. And so there's kind of a um, a natural build out or an ex- or or the minimum expectations are supposed to be set as far as that's concerned?
Absolutely. And minimum is probably the wrong word because it's not very minimal. It's extensive and what we're looking for is full coverage for in any area that contains uh cannabis product, it's transported through, it's moved through the building. And that includes the grow spaces, all the mother cloned rooms, hallways, stairwells, vault space. So we designed towards that. And then there are lots of nuances that we deal with, with the Cannabis Control Commission, where they want cameras on scales or specific views in areas or cameras that watch a lift or a process or movement through the building. And we go through all the inspections with the Cannabis Control Commission. So as these facilities are licensed, we go through the inspections. And we're always watching the inspections, watching for what's changing. There's little nuances based on the inspectors or the people that are, you know, inspecting the facilities. It's always an evolving process.
Right.
There is as much camera coverage in a cannabis facility as, actually more than we have in defense contractors that are doing, you know, top CCA clearance work. It's pretty regulated. There's more camera coverage than in the bank. So these guys have to, they get put through the wringer and the coverage is exceptional. I mean, it's, it's on par with like a casino or a gaming type environment.
Interesting, interesting. Okay. Sounds like you've done one or two.
We're north of seventy, I think.
Oh, my gosh. Wow. Excellent. Well, thank you for answering that. That was very, that was very helpful to understand.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else?
I do have a few questions, but I think I'll wait till after we hear from James, just in case he answers some of them.
All right.
How's it going, guys? I'll be running cultivation for the facility. We're really excited um just to bring justice to the plant, to the consumers and also to our staff. Um, really looking to raise the bar on a lot of what you see in a commercial cultivation facility. I know from experience, there's a lot of um there's a lot of barriers and a lot of hoops to jump through to get it done. And the regulation is um pretty grueling, but it really gives us an opportunity to bring something of really high quality to the market, but also to treat our staff in the way that we envision they should be. And um really just from every angle, be a contributor and not a negative impact like we often see. Uh, I know Ken asked me to touch on um odor, odor control. So within our spaces, we'll be utilizing uh carbon filter systems, which scrub the air inside the room. So those remain within each individual room and clean the air and recirculate it. On top of that, all the air leaving out of the rooms of the facility will be treated through a UV system as well as an ionization system. So that will help control anything that does leave the room. Built on a system with negative and positive pressure, we're able to very carefully control where air is going and how it is removed. So that will allow us to ensure that everything that leaves the facility is clean and um, and as impact free as possible. Um, outside of that, it's really all about cleanliness. Um, all of the regulation and testing in regards to yeast mold, bacteria, heavy metals, all that, um, holds us to the highest standard in in the country and in the world right now. And um, it's really exciting to be able to put out something at such a high quality. And we're excited to meet that challenge.
All right. Thank you, James. Uh, Selectman Daniels, did you have a couple of questions?
Yeah, um, just in regards to, I, I've heard um from cultivation projects, uh, concerns from other towns and all that stuff in regards to, you know, the light pollution, the water pollution, then the odor control, which I'm sure you, you've heard that there were probably going to be issues with that when you decide to start this project. Um, regarding the HVAC system, because that's what you just uh talked about, I'll start there. Um, the, the system that you've had designed and it, you know, it looks like a very extensive system. Uh, I'm not an engineer. Um, so a lot of that was gibberish to me, but it was a lot of paperwork that we got to see um in regards to the HVAC system. Are there any other cultivation projects out there that use this type of system in regards to to the odor control and all that? Um, is it, is the system that you're looking at, do we know that it's a successful uh HVAC system in reducing the odor and controlling it?
I would say that this is um a more robust system that I've seen in in most other facilities and on par with the highest level of odor mitigation. So um, I feel pretty confident that it will be successful in maintaining the odor inside and outside of the facility.
Okay, cool. Um, and then the light pollution. Um, I grew up in Western Mass, in Williamstown, Mass. And it was just probably two years ago. It was nighttime, I was driving back out this way from my parents' place. I was driving by Petersburg Mountain, which borders Williamstown. I was looking up at the mountain and my dad's on the fire department out there. I called him, I told him, you probably have a humongous fire on the mountainside right now. Like, the red-orange glow coming from the mountainside made me a little bit nervous. Um, and then he kind of laughed at me and said, no, there's a cultivation farm just on the other side of the mountain. They have a greenhouse style building. So a lot of glass panels and all that, I guess. And that, all the glow lights just lit the sky up red. Um, you're in a existing building with a roof in place and all that stuff. Do you, do you foresee, are there windows in this building? Like, what, what kind of, is there going to be light pollution? Are you expecting any type of light pollution?
Right. No, there shouldn't be any light pollution. I mean, I, I, aside from some motion sensor cameras, which I assume there will be directly around the, the building, I don't, I don't foresee there being any um light pollution in that regard.
So uh, I think CCC regulations, there's windows in that building, they need to be sealed. Um, you can't have windows in cultivation facilities, one for security purposes, two for light pollution. The only light, I mean, we'll have security lights, streetlights and cameras with little red dots. Um, most people won't know that there's cannabis being grown there. That's our goal and we're pretty confident that it's going to be that way. I mean, I work in the cannabis industry, I own a business and I visit these places. Uh, I go to cultivations in Worcester. Um, and I'm, I mean, they, they use these similar systems that James is talking about. And I could be in their um, their vestibule, their security trap, and I still don't smell cannabis until I really get into the facility. The specific one I'm talking about is Tomescow Wellness uh in Worcester. Um, but they're all pretty much the same, similar.
So to add to that, our lights will be IR, so it's not the visible light spectrum. And then the Cannabis Control Commission's gonna request a photovoltaic plan. And the lights for the exterior of the building need to be dark sky compliant, which means the light doesn't go up and out, it shoots downwards. And then the building is, you know, going to be a sealed, closed off building. You're going to have the greenhouse effect or anything. You're going to have a contained building. Very standard, very little light emitted. I mean, y- your light's going to be down lightings from, you know, security lighting around the building. But there's not, you're not going to get a red glow or a big light, you know?
Yeah. Um, and then on the water usage, like you said, that, that's a lot of water use. Is this property run off the Aquarian water system? Or is it a separate well, a couple of different wells separate or is it?
I, I believe it's town water.
Okay. Um, has, have we reached out to Aquarian to see like what kind of an impact that would have on the town? And this is probably more directed towards the town manager, maybe, I'm not sure. Uh, uh, what kind of impact that water usage would have on the town from day to day? And then over the course of the year, um, is it going to affect them where they're going to have to change the cost of water for um, individual people or anything like that?
I've never heard of that happening, um, but I can definitely find out um and contact you and and provide an answer for you.
From my experience, this is a pretty light use of of water. Um, it sounds like a lot, but it, our systems are very efficient. So um, a thou- twelve hundred gallons a day, while sounds like an incredibly impactful amount compared to a home, is not an insane amount of water and and is a lot less than a number of the facilities that I've seen in the state. So I don't think it should be a huge impact.
Mr. Chairman, oh, go ahead. Uh, Mr. Chairman, in, to that end, I think that uh Mr. Lucas knows that those steps we're talking with Aquarian really rest with them to make sure that Aquarian is one aware and two, um, you know, uh, is able to provide that kind of uh water volume. Uh, the other piece of it in terms of water runoff, uh, that, that is more impactful to the town because we right now and in our packets tonight are actually um extend an intermunicipal agreement for our sewer, um, you know, related to uh pumping up through the town of Auburn. And um, but again, this information is helpful to have now because over the next year, we're going to be actually um looking to hopefully increase that volume capacity. And uh, so these numbers are important for us in that regard, and they will be incorporated um as we try to negotiate a new intermunicipal agreement. So those are two areas. Uh, one, I think Aquarian would have to, you know, speak with um Ken and uh decide whether they have the volume capacity to provide. Uh, there is a lot of commercial industrial area uh up there and some may be heavier uses than others. Uh, but I'm sure Mr. Lucas can uh reach out uh to Aquarian to to get that answer.
Also, for perspective, a, a family of four would be about two hundred and fifty gallons a day.
So I, I think when I, when I first looked at this building with my Realtor, I, I know I contacted the electrical company to see if it could handle the load and if they could do the increase. They said yes. I spoke to National Grid, I have a, a ticket number. And I'm almost positive Aquarian said it was no issue, but um that's something that, that should be addressed for site plan, but I, I'm going to find that out. Um, I'm going to look back through my notes that I keep. Um, and uh, I'll figure out, but uh, I, I really don't remember that any water being an issue. It was just the runoff and how the town decides requests um that we want us to handle. It's about seventy-five to uh fifty-eight to seventy-one gallons of wastewater per day. Um, that, that's the re- that's, that's what's going to have an impact. So um, the real question is, what are we going to do with that? Are we going to run it off? Do you have the capacity?
That, that was actually going to be my next question in regards to, to the runoff was um waste runoff. Like, what's the impact on that water to the environment? You guys call it waste runoff. Is it something that you can reuse to rewater the plants over and over? Or is it stuff that you just completely have to get rid of? And then is it toxic for the local environment or to put into the sewer systems or anything like that? Anything that we need to be like, consider?
James?
Um, well, generally, um, it, town to town, it varies. In some facilities, it's set up so that the water is um it's um watered down a little bit more and then run out onto the property. There's some where it's, it's gone into the sewer and then there's others I've worked on where it's either um collected and brought back into the water reservoir, reservoir through a um through a uh system. And then the runoff can be the wastewater that's got nitrates, metals, so on, is generally a pretty low content, but you can basically cook it down with a coil condenser into uh a very small amount that's um of a thicker density. And then that's picked up by a um waste control group. So.
Thanks.
Hold on, Mike?
Yeah, yeah, I was just looking at my notes real quick. Um, but uh, yeah, that, that's, that's all I have for questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, gentlemen.
Good questions. I, I um did have a question either for Ken or for um uh David, is that, so this facility will have contained areas so that when you come from the outside, you go into a contained area before you enter the facility?
If you want to bring up the site plan again, um, with the security, I could kind of give you a little bit of a rundown. I
Well, see, the, the only reason I'm asking the question is being in the area where it's uh you know, kind of out of the way and stuff like that, I'm really concerned about, you know, your security, maybe at night, people breaking in or something like that is, or is the facility always manned? Um, you know, so that, that's the only reason, uh, major reason for my question in that regard.
Okay, and I'll start by answering, there will be obviously burglar alarm systems, security systems. They have redundant means of communications. They fall under having the need to have backup power and uh backup batteries. And then there will be limited access areas in the building. So there is access control that limits people coming into the lobby, that limits movement throughout the building, that limits access to the cultivation side of the property, that limits access to the vault area. So typically in a building like this, you will have four to five limited access areas. And you might be, and you're not even going to be able to get into the exterior door without someone uh letting you in. And then you typically come into a vestibule and then you have to be escorted from there throughout the building if you're a guest that's approved to be in there. But the whole building by nature is a limited access area.
Okay. So it's kind of like uh the places that sell it, is that you have an area that a person would go into first and then from there, you'd be allowed into a security area type of thing?
Correct, but where this doesn't even have a retail application, your limited access area starts at the exterior door. Because everyone that comes Because everyone that comes into this building is going to be escorted or with someone and everywhere you go, you're basically hitting a locked door. I mean, you're, you know, unless you have the card or the permission to go further, you're not moving through this facility.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Uh, I do have one question also for, for, uh, Ken. Did I miss, did I like hear this wrong? You're gonna be having, s- are you selling merchandise at some point?
Uh, no, no, we would like to, um, you know, have a website where we would have information about the company, the strains we're creating, the genetics we sell, the genetics we grow, future projects. And in, we wouldn't, so this isn't gonna be like a public building. This would be, um, maybe something off-site where we had a small warehouse where we shipped like t-shirts and sweatshirts and, and just like stuff with our logo on it. It's just another, um, source of income. Like I said, merchandising is everything. Everybody on the internet tries to get merchandise. You know, you build a brand that people recognize and then they wanna, you know, they support that brand. So they wanna buy some of the merchandise and represent the company. So, you know, I, that's like, you know, you know, not off the road. Once we start this facility and really showing our talents, especially James, um, how, how um, advanced he is in cultivating cannabis, you know, people are gonna know about this company and they're gonna wa- wait in line at dispensaries to get our product. And in turn, you know, you have something that everybody wants, you can sell sweatshirts to people, you know? So it, it's like that, that's just a, a part of a vision for the company that I, that I wanna build.
There's no public interfacing this building. This building is a closed site and there's no, you know, interfacing with the public or retailing operations out of here.
Okay, so it's something they could buy online or something like?
Yeah, it would be online and shipped. I mean, nobody, it's, this facility, it's not gonna be like, oh, stop by my office. It's, it's a serious place. We don't want people entering this facility. The way it's designed is so any of the public that does have to enter the building, whether it is to purchase cannabis, police officers, um, maintenance workers, we have it. So we wanna keep them out of the area of the building where cannabis is being cultivated because it, you know, with the regulations, how tight they are and how important it is to grow high-quality cannabis. You need that sterile environment, you know, we'll have state-of-the-art air scrubbing technology. It'll be like a clean room, um, like a NASA clean room where you could build a rocket in. That's how clean the atmosph- fear will be. So, um, we don't want, uh, we don't want pe- we don't want people coming there unless it's absolutely necessary because we're trying to keep this building as clean and sterile as possible with the least amount of activity, you know?
And to clarify Ken's term as far as purchase go, that would be wholesale transactions, not?
Oh, okay, great.
So the way it would work is we would, we would set up, uh, it would be appointments. One customer, one wholesale customer at a time. So we, you, you have, uh, if somebody's interested in purchasing cannabis from you and they own a retail location, we would set an appointment with one person, maybe two if they needed to buy, if they have two buyers. And we would have an appointment for them to come to the facility. And at that time, we wouldn't have anybody, any other visitors. It would be just them, um, obviously, uh, me, myself and, and probably a marketing person. But, um, so yeah, it, it, everything would be by appointment and, uh, we wouldn't, we would ha- we wanna have as least amount of activity as possible. Our goal is to grow the, the highest quality cannabis possible and, you know, be a good corporate citizen and be a positive impact for the community. You know, we, we just want everybody to be happy and be successful and, and, and operate this facility the proper way.
Very good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, sure.
Um, I just have a couple of quick questions for you. Um, you mentioned when you had looked at it with your realtor and I'm sorry, I probably should remember from the last time you presented. Did you already purchase the property or are you leasing it? What's your plan for the location?
Uh, the building's under, the building's under contract. We're doing a ten thirty-one exchange on the building and the building that we're exchanging it for has already been sold. So, um, the contract states I have to buy the building at execution of the host agreement. So when I sign the host agreement, but I'm too far, uh, the building's gonna be bought no matter what happens. Um, and just have to figure that out.
Okay, so I mean, you're, you're invested in Oxford and you're looking for this to be a long-term company venture.
So after the last meeting, we had, um, you know, it, it was a good, I felt like it was a great meeting. So I hired an architect, I hired the security company. You know, I have an engineer I'm waiting to pay, which, and I ha- I, I paid a lawyer also. So I've spent quite a bit of money, the building is quite a bit of money. Uh, that's being purchased by, uh, a few people, but, um, myself, one of them. So, yeah, I, I've already, I, I'm invested. I mean, I, I, I hired the people, um, to design the facility and, and create what I've been trying to, uh, relay to you guys.
I mean, I have to say, regardless of how anybody feels about cannabis, your plan seems to be pretty great and it seems to me personally that it's a no-brainer for Oxford to, you know, to bring the business to town, to add to the community that you're gonna add to. I'm familiar with the location. I mean, I, I personally think it's a perfect location for what you're looking to do. So I'm excited and hopeful that we can work something out with you to bring you to Oxford and have you expand our community. If we're able to execute a community host agreement, what's your timeframe as far as getting the ball rolling and actually, I guess, breaking ground, if you will, and starting?
So it's really, one, once I sign the host agreement, um, I already have site plan ready to present. So I would just need to, um, call a public meeting, send out letters and, uh, present my site plan to the planning board. And once that's approved, I could, that's pretty much, that's local approval. Then I move forward with the CCC. I could start building out the facility if I felt confident, um, at that time. So once we get provisional license, we could really start going, getting going. But I believe, you know, if we had a host, if, if we, if we had a host agreement and we got through the site plan within the next month or two, um, I think we'd start building out the facility within six months and maybe growing cannabis eight months to tw- to a year at the very, a year would be the max. Um, we should have plants growing within a year. A lot of it relies on the CCC. Uh, luckily, I, I'm in the social equity program, um, so I, I should, I should have priority hearing. So hopefully it moves along, hopefully we can get this, um, finished. And, and once I get in front of the CCC, it, it really gives you a good idea of how fast it's moving because you're basically, um, at their mercy, waiting for, waiting in line for them to review your documents. But, um, I, I've taken the time that I've had over the last, I mean, it's been more than just six months, but really over the last few months to really try to figure this out and, um, have a good plan and, and I feel confident in that. So, um, yeah, uh, yeah, we could be, hopefully we're building, hopefully we're building up that facility, like construction and the interior of the building within like four to six months, that would be awesome.
Great, thank you. That was all my questions.
Okay, thank you so much.
Great, any other questions or comments?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I just have a quick one. Um, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, Ken, when you were in before. Um, I learned a lot about this and I appreciated it and I learned a lot tonight. And, um, James also wanted to say thank you. And David, uh, I always learn a lot from you whenever you come in and present to us as well. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you and I know this is a big process and I appreciate everyone working with the town manager's office to kind of bring it to where we are today. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you and thank you for looking at our town, I appreciate it.
Thank you as well. And I, I mean, if anybody ever wanted to learn about this, I, I mean, this is like my life, I'll talk about it all day long. So, uh, you could call me if you want and I'll tell you whatever you wanna know.
Very good. Oh, yes, well, thank you very much, uh, Ken, David, James. Like, uh, Sleckman LeBlanc says, very informative, um, and I have to agree with Sleckman, Triono. I, I, uh, I think it's a no-brainer also. Hopefully we can get this done. You can get to the planning board, get that done and, uh, hopefully, like you said, be, uh, be building this year. That'd be great. So issue all the luck and, uh, thank you again for coming in.
Mr. Chairman, uh, oh, uh, sorry, Mr. Daniels, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna ask if, like, are we waiting on the select board to?
So.
One of us make a motion this evening to have the town manager start working on a host, community host agreement?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chairman, if I'm, the, this was the second presentation by Mr. Lucas. The first one, I considered the thirty-seven thousand foot view of what he really wanted to do, where he was thinking of coming into town. And, um, obviously, he does eat, breathe and sleep, um, the industry, uh, enough so that we have finally have a lot of documents, including ones that will be important, not only to our, um, planning board, but also our building commissioner and, um, a number of other departments, including our, our planner and economic development director. So we've had those conversations. Um, I feel, uh, comfortable in saying to the board that at this point in time, um, you can, uh, take a vote this evening to, uh, either direct the town manager to negotiate a host agreement or to the board itself to, uh, enter in, uh, to a host agreement. Obviously, Mr. Lucas has put down a number of things that we've included that have been important in other host agreements and I think we appreciate that. Uh, but having said as much, um, it's really the pleasure of the board, which way they wanna go in terms of, um, making the motion to, uh, either direct the town manager to negotiate that uh, on behalf of the board and/or, uh, have the board.
All right. Just, just one more comment, I guess, on that is, uh, I did see in some of the communications that, uh, BVO would be interested in, um, minimum, you know, year-long reviews or whatever in the event that, you know, something within the town isn't necessarily going as we had hoped and expected and trying to make that adjustment. So I guess as a selectman, that's something I would definitely like to see in the host agreement, just throwing that out there.
Right, so if there's anything, if, if, if we build this facility out and the town accepts us, if there's anything that the town is unhappy with, we're, we're more than willing to, you know, sit down and, and work it out. Anything at all, at any time in, in that matter. Uh, even with the chief of police, I told him he's welcome to come to the facility at any time. We wanna work together, um, in harmony and, uh, like I said, be a positive impact. So if there's anything that the town's unhappy with, we can address it. You know, if the water's becoming an issue, we can get a coil and start solidifying it. If the odor is, you know, somehow creeping out, you just buy additional equipment to scrub the air further. And the town can request that from us at any time if they, if they feel there's a problem. There, there's no, there's no real pushback from us. We know how to clean, um, the air and scrub it from odor. Uh, we're confident we could do so. And if the town wasn't satisfied, we could go to further lengths. So we'd be willing to work with you at, at, in, at all competi- capacities.
And I can say both for Ken and the cannabis industry, they've been great. You know, clients, they've been great to deal with, they're very, you know, accommodating for the towns. And I, I, we haven't had anyone, you know, standoffish or, you know, resist if, uh, they're great citizens, they're, they're, they've been great to deal with. It's, you know, if there's a problem, they'll address the issue, they're not kind, they're, they're not hiding behind anything.
Well. I'd like to make a motion then that the, uh, town manager prepares a community host agreement subject to review by the select board.
I'll second that.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to direct the manager to do a host agreement. Any other comments or questions? Then I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, that's for an affirmative, one absent, and we'll set the manager to, to work with them on that. Very good, thank you very much for that, uh, motion. And again, thank you, Ken, David and James, very informative, very informative, thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
All right, take care, have a good night.
Take care.
You too.
All right, next item on our agenda is a, uh, issue to void the less, the license for, uh, Yellow Pepper, which is an LLC doing business as Mexicali Cantina Grill. Um, we have information that their lease was not renewed, so they don't have a need for their liquor or conundical license. I'd entertain a motion to void those licenses.
Make that motion?
Uh, second the motion.
Any comments or questions? I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent, those licenses avoided. The, uh, next item on our agenda is, uh, Sleckman review policy on the, uh, ratification fees for egg-laying chickens and ducks. I guess there was a question as to how we set the fees. So is this coming, uh, from our policy group, Megan? Is this something you wanna, came from you people or?
No, this was something that, um, our secretary, while our joint secretary had reached out to us about to try to get some clarity on, um, she had actually put it on the agenda. But I just, I had a question though, because I know that at a past meeting, Sleckman Sad had specifically brought up the fees for this one. And because he's not here, I was wondering if we could potentially table this until a time that he can contribute to the discussion. I don't know if there's a timeline for when we need to do this by, but I know in a past meeting, he had questioned about the fees.
We, we do have one applicant in.
Okay, we, we have an applicant right now is what I'm being told, uh.
But we could, we could table them paying the, they pay the fees at the end of the process.
Okay, all right, they, yeah, well, let, let's do that. Uh, why don't we, uh, make a motion to table this, uh, to maybe the next meeting or the meeting after that when Sleckman Sad is available? Does that sound good?
I would make that motion. Or did you make it and you want me to second it?
Yeah, whatever, it sounds good.
I'll make the motion.
All right, and, uh, if there's no further comment, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent. Okay, we will, uh, we'll see how Sleckman Sad's doing, whether it'll be on the next, uh, agenda or the meeting after that. Very good, uh, good idea, Megan, very good. All right, uh, next issue is, I believe this comes from your committee, the, uh, ratification about the meeting, uh, after a holiday on Monday.
So this one, all, yes, this one does come from us, but I kind of have the same sentiment towards this one as the last one because it directly affects the board. I almost feel as though we should have a full board in order to take a vote on it, but the rest of the board wants to go forward with it, I'm fine with that too. I just kind of, what, what's your pleasure?
I have no issue. Uh, I'd, I'd be willing to entertain a motion to put this off till the same time we discuss the, uh, chicken and ducks.
I would make that motion then, second.
All right, I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes, for an affirmative, one absent, we will get to those two things. And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. We will get to those two things within the next couple of meetings, hopefully. All right. Thank you, Megan. That next item then is a request from our town clerk to, I guess she has a printer with the serial number, blah, blah, that she'd like to declare as surplus. So I entertain a motion to, to grant that request.
I would make a motion that the board declare the HP printer serial number PHBG R six, three, one, seven, zero surplus pursuant to request dated February twenty fourth, twenty twenty one. Second.
All right. Any other comments? I'll for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. That is now surplus. Very good. All right. Next item is articles for the town warrant submitted by the planning board. We have three of them. I'd entertain a motion to put these items on the annual town meeting warrant.
And make a motion that the board vote to allow the articles submitted by the planning board to be placed on the annual town meeting warrant and refer the articles back to the planning board in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty A, Section five. Second.
All right. Have a motion in a second. Any comments? I'll call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. We will send those back to the planning board. Very good. Thank you. Next item is our intermunicipal agreement for the treatment of wastewater. This has been put into our packets. This is our agreement with the town of Auburn for our wastewater. I'd entertain a motion to approve this agreement.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I just want to give the board a little historical perspective. This existing agreement, which has a threshold for how much volume we can send through the town of Auburn to the Blackstone abatement district, that is set to expire on March thirteenth. And because of several reasons, as you can see, we drafted an amendment to it. But prior to that, we did have a joint meeting recently. I had included the town manager in Auburn, and we included their new wastewater personnel, their engineer and DPW director, our new DPW director. And as you can see, the major reasons we outlined that there's no way we can actually put together an agreement without studying what could potentially be some, you know, pretty changing development proposals on our side that would require us potentially to increase that cap or threshold for volume that we're sending through that. Aside from the fact that there's been a major pandemic, the personnel have changed and that we need to actually do some studying. It was agreed upon by the group that we would submit this amendment, not only for our side, but also Auburn, to, you know, continue to maintain the existing agreement from one year's time from now, and so that we might be able to, hopefully, long before the one year is up, come together and present an actual agreement that fits the needs of Oxford a little bit better with its burgeoning, both economic growth and potential residential growth.
Very good. Thank you for that background information. Board members. Do I want to hear a motion to approve this amendment?
I would make a motion that the board vote to approve amendment number one to the intermunicipal agreement between the town of Oxford and the town of Auburn for the transportation of wastewater. Second.
Have a motion in a second to approve. Any questions? Call for a vote.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. We have approved that. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is Parkinson's Awareness Month Declaration. This was asked by Sleckman LeBlanc last week, so I will hand this over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was, I was reached out to by a resident in town who unfortunately suffers from Parkinson's disease. He's a, a very big advocate for the disease and finding a cure and so forth. And on behalf of him and the other people in town who do suffer from this, he did ask if the town, the Board of Selectmen would consider the approval of the month of April to be considered as Parkinson's Awareness Month. And I would ask the board to consider approving that for these residents.
Very good. Thank you. I'd entertain a motion then to approve this request and make April Parkinson's Awareness Month.
Make that motion. Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any more comments? Call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes. For an affirmative, one absent. April will now be Parkinson's Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Of course. All right. That brings us down to, I believe, the town manager's report. Town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and through you to the board. I'll start with a COVID nineteen update. On February twenty fifth, the governor had declared or announced that the state would be moving to Phase Three, Step Two of his reopening plan, and that would be effective March first, which was yesterday. Basically, the full details of the plan that was submitted by him can be found on mass.gov, but the major pieces of it that would impact Oxford relates particularly to the restaurant industry, where restaurants will no longer have a percent capacity limit, provided that they still do the six-foot social distancing, which will remain in effect in the maximum six persons per table, and now a ninety-minute dining limit. There also is a lifting to allow live musical performances, and the requirement, however, of food being accompanied with alcohol, not the reverse, has not been lifted. So all the sectors for actual other capacity limits will be raised from twenty-five percent to fifty percent, excluding employees. The big thing to, to note here is that, you know, this is going to go into effect while we're still rolling out vaccinations. And so I know that there's been a lot of feedback on the public health front about, are we just a little bit ahead of the curve? Hopefully, you know, the governor's judgment on this will make not a negative impact on the progress that we're making. But having said that, I will skip to what I have as number seven on COVID nineteen case rates. As of yesterday, we almost broke a thousand total cases. We were at nine hundred and ninety cases, maybe today that that has happened, but we have fifty-seven active cases. As I had said to the board, we had just in our last meeting finally dropped below a hundred active cases per day. We still have people in this community who are contracting the virus, as do we have some employees as well. And obviously, we've had seventeen COVID-related deaths of Oxford residents, and that's always important to mention. You know, hopefully, there'll be greater access, as we're hearing on the federal front, of a new vaccine being introduced and hopefully, with greater volume being given to the state to administer, we will have more people vaccinated. We also are going to have the second round for our seniors that had received the vaccine, the seniors seventy-five and over and public safety people. They'll be due for their vaccination, second one, starting next week, and then we'll have the, the next round after that. And we're, we're hoping that the clinic will get those doses. There have been some healthcare clinics that have not necessarily received their second doses, and I think it was CareWell clinics that had decided that they weren't going to be continuing to offer those slots because they weren't getting the vaccine. Hopefully, we're on the road to preventing those kinds of scenarios from happening, and I'm optimistic that if we can do what we did the first time, we'll get those seniors vaccinated. The next item on the agenda for me is to let the board know that March sixteenth, we will have a joint meeting with the finance committee for the annual budget presentation, and also the finance committee continues to hold its meetings with department heads to hear their budget priorities. And obviously, most of those are being held on Wednesdays throughout the month. Town meeting update. I just wanted to let the board know that we had articulated a date of certain in which all articles for the annual town meeting were going to need to be submitted, and that was March thirtieth. But they are starting to submit those articles and they're being received through the Board of Selectment office. But my office also recognized we didn't have a regular form for warrant article submission, so that in the event, when we're looking at all of these different articles, we can understand there's a uniformity to explaining what the cost may be associated with a particular warrant article or consequences if a warrant article wasn't passed. We are planning for our town meeting to be held on May fifth. And eventually, as we get closer to that, the board will be approving the overall warrant for that town meeting. We are listing it as general location, the high school. We don't know exactly which location, whether it will be indoors, outdoors, but we're going to be consulting with the town moderator and obviously, a number of other peoples as it gets closer to that. I can't believe we're already in March and we're that close to, to the town meeting coming up. Excise tax bill reminder, just to let you know that the treasurer collector has stated the excise bills are definitely coming in steadily by mail, stacks and stacks of them. As a reminder, the excise bills are due on March eleventh, so that's coming up rather quickly. We had extended our office customer service window hours to accommodate that. We're still asking people to pay online if they absolutely can do that, and always checks can be dropped off in our drop boxes, both in the front and the back of the building. Again, cat and dog licenses, we always have people who are trying to remember that date, so we're putting that out as the cat license date was February eighth, twenty eighth, that it was due. There are fees that are attached if there is a lateness, and that would apply right now. So just putting that out, and obviously, dogs for relicensing, that will be due April thirtieth. And they can now be renewed online by mail or in person at the customer service window because it's open. We could not always do that in the past. So that's a good thing, too. Financial policies and procedures. At the last meeting, I mentioned that I reported that the Collins Center was finalizing the, the look of our financial policies and procedures, which is being done by a twenty thousand dollar compact grant that we had obtained. The actual document is now in its final stages. It will be finished this week, and that we had both myself and the finance director review, along with all of the financial-related departments that have to adhere to these policies. Once they're in hand, I'll definitely be sharing those with the board. And also, there is going to be a warrant article in relation to coming up with a best practice that, that is in the field or the department area of the treasurer and collector, and that has to do with what we call handling of tailings. And so we're going to adopt that provision of Mass General Law so that we will handle those in a particular way. It's a pretty large document. It's, as you're going to see shortly, it's seventy-seven pages that we have not necessarily had. We've had different ways of handling things, and now we're going to be using those as financial best practices for us moving forward. The next item is just to let the board know, we do have a new veterans agent. I'm hoping that in the next meeting, he couldn't come this evening, that we would have him to be introduced to the board as well as to the community, and that is Robert Rassikoff. He is no stranger to the town. He's been somebody who has been very much involved in our honor guard. There was a lot of interest, interest generated for this position. I, I will tell you that I was pleased to find somebody like Mr. Roberts, who was really interested in filling the position. He is now being trained by our district director, Veterans District Director, because we are part of a district for our Veterans Services and Benefits. And Mr. Rassikoff's hours are going to be Tuesdays and Thursdays, ten AM to two PM, and Wednesday from six PM to nine PM. But he's somebody who's very dedicated already. He will be going through training because as much as we have people who are dedicated to our veterans, there's a lot to this position that's very detailed, and they have to pass and be certified by the state to be able to handle the methodology behind actually determining benefits and making sure that the paperwork is in order. The next item is just to let the board know, Cecilia Smolensky-Mallett Trust Funding is available. The trusts, trustees have met and the application materials have been prepared. We know that there's going to be a formal announcement for availability, and that occurred on March first. If you know of any group that may benefit from this funding, please let, let them know to be directed to the town's website to obtain an application. The next item is library update. I know that it was asked in a previous board meeting to get an update from the library. I know in your packets you'll see both memos coming from Ron Alex, who is the actual, actually, that's an email, who has been our architect and onsite project manager with regards to the Mass Historic Grant aspect of it. Mike Lupus also has been a facilities director, and he has been overseeing the entire project. And there's another memorandum also from Brittany McDougall about the library's almost completion of the project. They're just waiting on one company for some storm windows. But you have to remember, we have those beautiful stained glass windows that went through an entire reapportment, resealing process, as well as the front door, and as well as the entire side envelope of the building, which had to be taken down completely and, you know, re-put together. So I did want to provide with that information. It was asked the last time. Relation to the library, it's not in your packet, but I got it this afternoon, and it's time-sensitive, so I am going to announce it that our library director, Brittany McDougall, had put out, and we were going to have an announcement on our website, that the new normal New England Road Trip, the guy from New England Road Trip, who is Ted Reinstein, he is going to be doing an actual virtual meeting with, with the town of Oxford in the Oxford Free Public Library on March eighth, twenty twenty one, seven PM via Zoom, and you can go on to the Oxford Library website to sign up. He's very, very dynamic, and he is going to actually take people around a tour virtually. And, and I'm sure he'll be very entertaining. So I would suggest any of the community that enjoys that program, non-virtually, they get to see it also in a virtual sense. The next item is just to let the board know that we go through a lot of training, and we're going to do even more of it now that we have our human resource director. We did enter into HIPAA training, and of course, that has to do with how we handle and process health information on behalf of our employees in particular. And we did attend, myself and several other people who are typically charged with handling health information, was actually present at a virtual meeting hosted by NFP, which are insurance brokers. And I want to thank Joanne Frederick, who's our HR specialist, for having pulled it together and got all of the relevant parties to participate. And the last thing is just to let the board know, once again, that the senior center is doing its three dollars, which is a tremendous bargain for hot takeout lunches. And if you haven't had an opportunity to see or to encourage a senior to participate and to just call the senior center on a Monday or a Thursday so that they can get a hot meal on Tuesday or Friday. There's some incredible, great lunches that are actually happening, so I want to just encourage people to spread the word because the Young and Heart Cafe is alive and well in providing a lot of wonderful meals to our seniors. The last item is something that also came to light recently, and it's such great news that I want to share it with you, and that is we have been talking about the pedestrian improvements and the recent grant that we had filed, not only last year, but filed again this year, called the Shared Streets Grant. And I'm really, really excited to tell you that my office has been contacted by the Department of Transportation, and we are going to be receiving a three hundred thousand dollar grant to and we are going to be receiving a $300,000 grant, uh, to make all of these, uh, new safety improvements in our downtown area, including enhanced crosswalks with pedestrian safety beacons, ADA-compliant curb ramps, improved pedestrian signals, and even, um, some bus shelters. Uh, we have already, because we're gonna be on a quick, uh, timeline to actually get this done, um, this is not, uh, this funding is coming in addition to the Mass DOT actually doing the improvements to the Fair Lawn, um, pedestrian crossing there. And they are going to put in the, um, rapid, uh, signalization so that we can have much more improved safety along with making some improvements to the lighting area. So this is terrific news because, um, it, it, it is allowing us to make these improvements, not just there, but along the corridor of the Main Street. And, uh, you know, that in conjunction with a hopeful future revisioning of the, the Main Street, um, and I think we're gonna be able to accomplish some great things. And I just want to close by saying, um, in particular, um, I know this has been very important to one, uh, resident, and that would be a member of our Planning Board, uh, Chris Byrd, who actually, um, had approached me and talked about, um, her, uh, her experience crossing the road and, and being injured. And, you know, that's a really hard thing to take when you're a resident and to look at a problem and see it and be a member of the Planning Board and hoping we can address it. And I told her to have faith, um, in myself and our new DPW Director. And, um, I want to say it was a real collective effort to get this done. And, um, and I'm sure that, um, you know, in, in general, people like to hear that they can affect those kinds of major changes. And, um, and I want to thank her for her service and also her tenacity for promoting, um, the need for this and, uh, being a good voice, uh, of reason to make it happen. So, um, with that, I will conclude my Manager's Report, um, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you very much, Jen. We go to Selectmen Announcements, and we'll start with Selectmen Triano.
Just had one quick follow-up to a previous, um, question that I had asked. I didn't know if we had had a chance to get in contact with either the DPW or the Post Office regarding the mailboxes blocking the sidewalk on the 600 block of Main Street. Um, I know as the weather gets nicer, people are gonna want to be out more. Um, and I know with the wind today, it happens to make me think of it because as I was driving down Main Street, I saw all the mailboxes that had blown over. Um, and it made me just wonder where we were at with that. Um, I know it's been busy, but just touching base on it.
So, um, just so that you know, our new DPW Director is aware of it. Uh, that would, uh, you know, we talked about the fact that, um, on the way, uh, to Route 20, uh, via Route 56, there was, uh, a changing in the, uh, direction that they were actually putting mailboxes, and that was something that they had to actually work with on the Post Office, knowing that there's no real, um, you know, proposed construction work on a sidewalk there. I think that, um, I left it in the hands of the DPW Director to try to investigate what could be done and what could be done not only with the Post Office, but perhaps, um, those individuals who have those boxes on their personal property. There's a lot of area there that's very hard, uh, terrain-wise. Um, so I gotta leave it to the engineers to figure that one out because, um, it, it's gonna require something clever in certain areas unless there's a major infrastructure improvement. Um, and the only reason I haven't, uh, submitted anything to you yet because I was still waiting for him to get back to, uh, the Post Office, but I thank you for your question.
Thank you. That was all I had.
All right. Thank you. Uh, Selectmen LeBlanc.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Jen, I have a quick question. I was looking at the form, the new forms for the, um, for the article or the, uh, for the warrant requests. And, and one of the questions on the article is, it, it says something along the lines of, um, how do you want this article to appear on the warrant, or something along those lines? And I just wanted to, I just wanted to confirm, because those, th- the exact language on the warrants have to be very specific, correct? And I know that in the past, we've had people, like residents, provide language that isn't quite suited for, for the, for the warrant. So I was just wondering, um, are, are we able to provide any guidance on how that particular line item is supposed to be, uh, to look at or read on the warrant? Or are we just gonna print them the way that they've provided it to us?
Um, so, no, there's, there's two different things. There's the residents, uh, that submit warrants are
Yep.
on how they do that. I think we encountered that with the, uh, previous, um, chicken articles.
Chickens, right.
Different way of actually putting our own article together, which we could, could actually vet through, um, legal counsel. So that just, um, looks, uh, to get, uh, departments, uh, more than likely, and department heads to, if there are, or another Board, uh, that already has an idea of where they want to grab a new language or what, uh, policy area that they want to change, um, let's just say, or, or looking at something that another community already has and citing the Mass General Law and the section of that. Um, so that's what that's to do. Um, and then we always, you know, w- wind up having the final version of the articles that are presented, also presented to legal counsel to make sure that, um, they will pass muster, um, even, even if they're, they're passed at Town Meeting, they still have to pass muster if they're, um, a zoning article in particular to go to the AG's office. So, so that's what that means, uh, because if, if you leave open to interpretation a Board, uh, like a Conservation Committee or another Board might have an idea about it and say, oh, we just want to do this. And, um, you can't always capture what they're discussing on their Board. So we need department heads and Boards to actually specify a little more in greater detail so that we can achieve the type of article that they so desire, um, and so that the Board of Selectmen also understands what's being put forward to them.
Thank you very, thank you very much. Um, I, I have a que- it, where is the vet, Jen, Jen, while we're chatting, where is the Veterans Agent Office? Is it in the Town Hall or is it in the Senior Center?
Senior Center.
Is in the Senior Center. Okay, got it. Okay. And, um, I'd like the, uh, the hours that he's going to have, so, um, okay, thank you for that. I appreciate that. Then, how are, are we still working the Town Hall? Again, sorry, Jen, still you. Um, are we still working the Town Hall where we're still working the window at the, at the back of the building? Or have we opened up the Town Hall at all to residents?
No, we have not opened the Town Hall to residents unless there's a specific appointment that someone has, um, with a department head, um, and they have gone through, um, the, uh, the questionnaire phase and, and the department head is alerted. But no, the public, um, is, is not, um, in the building. Uh, we broadened the hours to accommodate the public. Uh, we still are not quite there. Um, like I said, uh, we have just dipped below 100 active cases per, per day here. And, uh, we're hoping in the not-so-distant future, we'll be able to do that. Um, I just, I think we're not quite there, and I hate to go in that direction and then have to close out again. Um, and we have had a number of recent cases of employees, um, in different areas, um, who have also, uh, recently contracted the virus. Um, so it's a way to safeguard the public. Um, none of the public so far has really, you know, in the, in their day-to-day act, um, transaction, some are really happy. They don't have to come into the building, and they can just quickly drop off, um, their excise, uh, bill, um, or the like. But I think anyone who has a more in-depth question will typically, um, you know, uh, make a phone call and, and, and address it to the, um, department head.
And would you say that, um, the library is, is probably still along that same line of opening?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that, you know, you know, these kinds of questions come up. I, I, you know, I think if we're gonna kind of talk about where we're gonna go with it, I don't want to put my words into the, the mouth of a department head because they know best. And, um, so, um, I'd be more than happy, um, to kind of put that in a, as a future agenda item or get a memo, um, in addition from the, um, from the, uh,
Librarian?
It's the mid, yeah, from the, from Brittany.
Okay. Yes, um, if, you know what, if, if, I mean, if she wants to draft a memo or if she wants to come, it, I'm fine with whatever one works best for her. Okay, so that's fine. Um, and then the last thing I had, Mr. Chairman, is I just wanted to, um, I wanted to thank Jen Warren. Uh, she's done a tremendous amount of work for the S- uh, Smolensky-Mallette Fund. Uh, we, she, she redid a lot of the, the documents for it. Um, we've tried to increase the outreach for this fund, um, which, which is a benefit to the residents of Oxford. Um, she's done a, a great job of, of really trying to, um, recirculate and, 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 and rework this, this fund so that we have more people, um, apply for it. And I just wanted to thank her for doing that. That, that was a big undertaking. And, um, this partic- these particular funds, um, these are funds that was, that were established about 20 years ago, um, from a resident in Oxford who had passed. And, uh, they put these into trust funds for us, and that we use the interest to fund certain particulars in the town that schools cannot, um, that schools cannot provide, um, you know, things like, uh, we, it's, it's a major component of the, of the ROTC program. It's a big, Little League has gotten funds from us before. It, as we talked about earlier in the meeting, you know, the, the payment of the splash pad. So, um, I highly encourage anyone out there who is, who is seeking funding for some sort of activity for people under the ages of 18 to, to please go to the website and look at this because there are funds available that we would love to hear from you as to how we can help. So, um, and that was it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Selectmen LeBlanc. Uh, Selectmen Daniels.
Uh, I kind of feel like I should say something after all that.
If you said good night, that would, everyone would be happy, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think I have anything.
Well, you, you asked so many questions with the, uh,
Yeah, I took up my time with that.
I, I think you took all your time up then, yeah. Thank you, uh, thank you, Selectmen Daniels. Um, Jen, I have one thing. I was talking to a musician friend, uh, that I know in town. And, uh, when he heard about the live music, um, they don't, they don't have to wear masks or anything like that, right? I mean, uh, they, you know, they, they can't be, you know, if a band are live performance, you know, I, you can't have six feet between band members in some of these places. So are they like, you know, releasing the, the guidelines a little bit on that? Do you know?
Yeah, again, I think all of those, um, just, just like when we, uh, actually looked at all of these businesses for outdoor dining and the like, there are specific, um, criteria on the state's website on how they actually can conduct, um, or fulfill, uh, the obligation as they meet the, uh, new standards, uh, for the phasing of, um, activity back into restaurants. And so, um, I don't have that, um, off the top of my head, but I do know that any establishment that's probably thinking about that, um, knows that they have to look on the, um, state's website, uh, to make sure that that criteria is met, just like the 90-minute rule for dining. They're still six, uh, people at a table, six feet away. So those are all very specific criteria, and, you know, establishments know that they have to comply with that. Most do, um, and those that don't, uh, you know, would, um, be subject to some kind of, you know, enforcement, um, verbal encouragement to do the right thing initially, followed by any number of things. So honestly, um, that, that would be the best thing I think someone could do is go to the state CPH website, uh, and the Governor's website because those, uh, criteria are enumerated in very full detail. It's like, uh, fitness centers and all kinds of places that have a, a bunch of different, uh, things.
I know, thank you, because I, I didn't think to tell her to, to look at the state website. So that's, that's, uh, very good advice. Thank you. Uh, that's all I had is, uh, we had talked about that. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second that motion?
We have a motion and a second. I'll call for a vote.
Yes.
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 And I'll vote yes for an affirmative, one absent. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Have a great night.